It's about that time. Let's go ahead and kick it off. We've got a quorum. It's seven P M. December twenty first, Tuesday night. A notice is hereby given of a Friendswood zoning board of adjustment regular meeting to be held at nine ten South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas, Friendswood City Hall, Council Chambers regarding the items of business according to the agenda listed below. Call to order, and we're all here. Communications from the public is the first thing up. And to comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the board may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the board may direct such subjects to be placed on a later later regular agenda for discussion and or possible action. Is there anyone that would like to address the board? Seeing no one. Okay, I'll explain the procedure and the process that goes on here is. First, we conduct a public hearing, but we have an agenda item that we will. We're going to discuss with the city attorney some legislative updates. At the we hold a public hearing after the city and the petitioner present their cases. We will receive comments from the public. Anyone from the public may be recognized to give a statement either for or against the request. A city representative will offer a history of the original request and why it was denied. Then the petitioner or the petitioner's representative will take the podium and tell us why they think we should approve their request. The public will be asked if they would like to give a statement for or against the request. At this point, the public input will be closed and only the board members will have the opportunity to ask questions, gather information, and to deliberate and vote on the application. By law, a super majority vote is required to approve the application. That means you will need at least four of the five votes to approve the application. The only way to appeal of the board's decision is to file a lawsuit in a district court, county court, or court county court at law where the property is located. There is a short time deadline for the appeal. And optional, you may wish to consult a lawyer if you want to consider appealing our decision. And who is going to be speaking before us here tonight? Okay, get you to stand up and raise your right hand? Anyone else that wants to talk? Okay. We've got to. If you intend to speak more than. It's a quasi judicial proceeding. The city keeps records including audio and video of the testimony given. All persons who will be speaking before the board must be sworn in, and we will ask you to speak from the podium so that we can hear you clearly and so that your testimony can be recorded. If we ask you questions during our deliberation, we ask that you return to the podium for your answers for the same reason. If you intend to speak to the board tonight, please stand and raise your right hand for your oath. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth and the whole truth in your testimony before this board this evening? All right, thank you. Okay, Mary Kay, you have the floor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to talk to you about House Bill fourteen seventy-five. It was passed in May, and it took effect on September first, two thousand and twenty-one. The intent of this bill was to provide consistency across boards of adjustment in all cities in the state of Texas, so property owners would have more certainty and consistency in knowing what are considered grounds for what is considered an unnecessary hardship when applying for a variance. As you all know, state law establishes your authority to authorize, in specific cases, a variance from the terms of the zoning ordinance if the variance meets all the requirements set out in the state law. The four those four factors have not changed. They remain the same. You must make a finding that it satisfies all of the four factors. One, the variance is not contrary to the public interest. And two, due to special conditions, a literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. And three, granting the variance is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. And four, substantial justice is done. So you can only authorize the variance if all of those four requirements are satisfied. Under number two, which is where this new bill comes into play, if you determine there are special conditions pertaining to this property being considered, you can consider the following as grounds to determine whether compliance with the current ordinance is applied to a structure that, subject to this appeal, would result in unnecessary hardship. There the state law provided that these are five grounds that you can consider which would determine that it's an unnecessary hardship. And it's on your little form sheet. They're one through five. The first one is, it would be an unnecessary hardship if the financial cost of compliance is greater than fifty percent of the appraised value of the structure as shown on the most recent certified tax roll. Number two, if compliance would result in a loss to the lot on which the structure is located of at least twenty-five percent of the area on which development may be may physically occur. If compliance would result in the structure not being in compliance with a requirement of a current city ordinance, building code, or other requirement. If the compliance would result in unreasonable encroachment on an adjacent property or easement. Or if the city considers the structure to be a nonconforming structure. So the state law just clarified that if you find one of those five things, that meets unnecessary hardship, which is part of your four-part test that you need to satisfy. Yes, sir.
Do those also fall under the special conditions particular to the home involved?
No, those are separate. First, you need to find that there are there are certain there are special conditions. In in the past, you know, there maybe there been like the topography does not allow for it. So it's the actual physical conditions of the property. So that's separate. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mary Kay. All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. And the public hearing is now open and conduct a public hearing to receive comments, both oral and written regarding a request for a variance of ten feet eleven inches from the required rear yard setback of twenty-five feet on the property located at nine oh two Pine Breeze Drive, Lot twenty-five, Block one of the Forest subdivision, Galveston County, Friendswood, Texas. The hearing will include staff presentation. And Brian, at this point.
Good evening, gentlemen. Staff presentation is going to be really, really small on this one. It basically, we received a permit application for an extended patio at nine oh two Pine Breeze Drive. Upon reviewing the site plan, the proposed construction was going to encroach the rear setback for primary structure, which is the twenty-five feet. At that time, we notified the applicant that we would not be able to issue the permit because it violates the zoning ordinance.
Okay. At this point, call for the applicant to make their presentation.
I guess you have the same files that I do, the piece that you just had up. Oh, sorry. Ted Conlin, I'm the resident at nine zero two Pine Breeze Drive.
I'm sorry, how did you pronounce?
Conlin.
How did you pronounce your last name?
Conlin. So what we're asking for is to extend the current patio. Right now, there's a there's a there's a low patio over the back door. And it has a the house is built with a with a concrete patio that extends out past that. And I would like to we'd like to extend the roof over top of the current existing patio, but that encroaches on the twenty-five foot setback. It doesn't encroach on the ten-foot setback. It encroaches on the twenty-five foot setback. The way that the the lot is shaped, you can see that the it's it's kind of long and skinny in a triangle, and the house is offset on the yard so that moving anything back gets into that the house is basically built right up to the twenty-five foot setback. And extending anything into that patio, anything at all basically gets into the twenty-five foot setback. It just it really limits the size of the yard that we can use because the the bulk of that triangle in the back half is isn't really usable. It's actually quite swampy. And just the shape of the yard makes it really limited for use, plus the twenty-five foot setback takes out most of that backyard as well, because that's along the the three-hundred-foot section of the backyard.
Any questions?
And there are there are other properties along the same fence line of ours that have that have patios built out as well. There's nothing behind us. That's a that's a hundred-foot easement for the Exxon Pipeline. So there's no there's no back neighbors behind us.
Are you done?
I'm not sure what else to say.
Okay, well, at this time, we'll call for public comments. Is there anyone that wants to speak for? Please state your name.
Yes, Steve Marcelli, Forester Friendswood, Chair of the A C C Committee of the Forest. Really, I've got a point of clarification that I really wanted to have stated so we know how to move forward. In the Declaration of Covenants and Restrictions for the Forest Friendswood, Section two point one nine setbacks, all we have stated is a ten-foot setback at rear out of twenty-five foot. So this is the first that we're hearing that there's a twenty-five foot setback on the rear property lines. So I just really want a point of clarification, because all the surveys we've seen so far only have a ten-foot setback, and our Declaration of Covenants call for ten foot.
Okay. Any comments against? Okay. Now, possible discussions and take action regarding this request for variance.
Okay, can I say something before y'all start? This is a city ordinance, which is a law. It is it is the it is what we we abide by.
So the the ordinance supersedes anything else. It's a twenty-five foot setback, clearly.
Yes, sir.
That's always been the case?
You're welcome to come up if we ask you another question. Thank you.
So I can't ask a clarification question on that?
Did someone else have it? Did anyone else have a question? Go ahead.
That's something you can discuss with Brian afterwards. He can help you out. Just follow up with Mary about, has that always been the case as far as the law at twenty-five foot?
How long is this ordinance? It's it's been a long time.
Current residential setbacks for single-family residential have always been that twenty-five front, twenty-five rear. It is a lot of HOAs instill private deed restrictions that are separate from city ordinances. When they draft those deed restrictions, they don't verify with the city laws, and so sometimes they're conflicting, but the city ordinance will always supersede. And then if, for whatever reason, the deed restrictions are more restrictive and the city is aware of the deed restrictions, we will notify an applicant that they they need to abide by the stricter of the rules.
All right. Okay, I'd missed something here. The public hearing is was closed at the end of your remarks, sir, so we're now under discussions here. Anyone else have anything to do with this?
Yeah, I had a question. I apologize. Was it Collins? Yes, sir. If you don't mind stepping up, please. You you made a point that several of your other neighbors have already patios that are outside of this twenty-five foot setback?
Yes.
Well, I mean, I. Well, you'll need to speak at the podium, so.
I haven't gone out into their backyard.
You're offering evidence that it appears to you that there are others
Yes.
on your same cul-de-sac?
Along the same fence line, correct. They back up to the same easement that I do. The property that I was looking at.
Do you know perhaps if they ask for a variance or?
I do not.
I see.
I I have not talked to the homeowners. I've just I've seen it from from the trail behind our house.
There's a trail on the Exxon property or something?
On the right away back there. Okay, Brian.
One, excuse me, how how long have you been a resident in this home?
Five years.
Is the patio, has it the concrete patio been built yet?
It was built when we moved in. It was it was it was built by a previous homeowner.
If I can, if I look at it now, that big white concrete slab that it if and if I look at the 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 red line, it indicates the setback on my well, on my drawing, it's a black line. The the black line cuts through twenty twenty-five percent of that patio on a on a corner of it, doesn't it?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, which is fine in terms of flat work. But so the patio was it was built before or after you purchased the property?
Before.
Okay, so the patio was already built when you bought the property?
Right.
And.
The side the side of the the side of the pool is on the ten-foot easement. But the patio, which you see in the as a as a white square, is a is a is a gazebo. It's like a little movable gazebo thing, just a shade.
I took that to be it's a gazebo on top of the.
The pavers.
On top of pavers?
It's a it's a patio. It's a paver patio, right, that was that was built before we moved in.
So are you intending to remove the pavers and put a concrete slab?
No, I'm intending to just basically put a roof over top of where the pavers are.
I see.
Because I have a patio. I have a I have a little gazebo there right now, but it it blows around in the wind. It doesn't last. I keep replacing the covers on it. I'd like to have a solid roof that comes out over top of that instead of having having the gazebo.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, do they have to have a permit to put the pavers down in the in that like that?
Typically, no. The pavers are considered landscaping, and we don't require a permit for that.
Okay, and the temporary or portable gazebo is same way?
Correct. No portable structures are required to be permitted.
Okay. But so when it was when the swimming pool was built, there had to be a. We there had to be an exemption given to for the swimming pool to be built, correct?
No.
No?
Swimming pools are not subject to the rear setback lines. The pools have to remain out of easements, and we require them to be five foot from the side property line for the water line.
All right.
Edge of pool. An accessory structure has different setbacks as well.
Okay.
Got a question. Sure, Brian. So you mentioned earlier, you used a specific term. Hello? Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, you mentioned a while ago, specific term, primary structure. I've been looking at some of these items here, and a primary structure, different from a secondary or not primary, can you just elaborate on?
Sure. So much like this house where the setback is at twenty-six point, it looks like twenty-six point nine feet, that the primary structure is the the primary. The primary structure, the the main existence for that property. So anything you attach to it then becomes subject to those primary setbacks. If if it were detached structure, a secondary a detached garage would be considered an accessory structure, and those have a very different setback requirement than the primary structure.
Okay, can I ask a couple more questions here to follow up on this? So if you are going to put, let's say, detached garage, that could, and I won't get into it, but that could go into that twenty-five foot area.
Absolutely. The detached garage would have a rear setback of ten feet and a five-foot side setback.
And that's to stay out of the utility easements or?
In this one, it it just happens to be the same. We do have a ten-foot rear setback on an accessory structure. It just happens to be the ten-foot is the same as the utility easement on this particular lot.
Okay, and so building a roof structure onto the home to stick out that far would be make that roof structure still part of the primary?
Correct. Once you attach it to the primary structure, it is subject to the primary setbacks.
Okay. Thanks, Brian. That's all I have.
Brian, I have a question for you. Do you have any direct knowledge of any of the other properties that he was mentioning that are along that fence line that have any encroaching?
So we do have we do have one project that's going along, and I believe it's on Oak Park Lane, which I think is the project he's referencing. That is a secondary detached structure that can be up to just the ten-foot side or rear setback.
Could you elaborate? You mean like attached to a garage, maybe?
It is a lone standing pool house that is separate from the primary structure.
Thank you.
Brian, so so detached, I'm sorry, it's a detached garage. That means we it's not attached at all to the main house with a roof, walkway, or anything?
So we do have, like everything else, we do have some kind of additional. So if it were attached by a breezeway, and the breezeway is an open, has to be open on both sides and can never be closed in, if it is attached by a breezeway, then the detached garage is considered to be still detached.
We've been through that.
Okay, well, Brian.
May I ask?
Go ahead.
Can you tell me exactly what kind of construction you're talking about covering this with?
It's just the roof. It's just an extension of it.
Okay, but a bit more than that? I mean, how?
I'd like to keep the same the same look of the existing roof and basically just extend it out with the timber beams. It's pretty common to see around the area with extended backyards.
Attached to the house?
With the timber beams attached to the house, correct.
So, Mr. Conlin, so having been through some of this myself, you had to have it engineered so that it could be and meet windstorm so it could be attached to the home?
Correct.
And that and that had to be presented to the city?
Correct. Our plan is to take out one of the beams, put a or one of the one of the existing posts, put an engineered beam across, and then extend out the required or the 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 expected distance out to the edge of the the existing patio. And then basically have a have a domed roof that comes out to the end.
Okay. All right, do anybody else have any questions?
I actually do have one final question for you, Mr. Conlin. I know you had indicated that compliance with the twenty-five foot setback renders a lot of the back of your property unusable. Can you estimate percentage-wise about what percentage of your overall property would you feel becomes unusable if you complied with the twenty-five foot requirement?
Probably about twenty percent of it, because the by far the longest the longest edge that I have on my property, that's that's a triangle, is subject to the twenty-five foot setback, and that takes out most of my backyard.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Any questions? Anything? Brian? Becky? Anything? Okay. Well, there's discussions here, guys. What do y'all think?
Mr. Chairman, I would if you would go through your findings item by item, then we can take a vote.
Okay. So do y'all believe the grant of the variance will not be contrary to the public interest? Yes or no?
Is that you want us to answer it? Are we to answer independently or just as a group, or how do you? This is a new new for us.
It's a form we've had to do, but four out of the five of us have to agree.
Is 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 this a super majority? Is this a full majority?
The form and the process are the exact same as they've always been. There's just a couple extra criteria in there, so it is up to the chairman how he would like to proceed.
Up to the chair.
If you want to get head nods per item, or if you want to read all of them, unless, Mary Kay, do you have some direction?
I think the first three should be just general consensus of four out of five without independent vote. I think when you get to hardships, I think you're going to have to determine if one of those is satisfied and have more discussion on that one.
Okay. So can we agree that this would not be to the or this would be not be contrary to the public interest?
I would agree with that statement.
I agree with that.
Okay. There are special conditions particular to this property involved? Could be the shape?
I would agree with that statement.
Setback, you would agree?
No.
No.
Disagree.
Okay.
If that's the case, it stops right there. You have to meet all four tests.
With with the super majority?
Yes.
Okay. Do we want to discuss our reasoning or anything? I don't know how.
We have to have a motion.
Well, let's let's make sure we're we're right on the same page here. There I'll read it. There are special conditions peculiar to the property involved. Yes or no?
No.
Yes, I would say that.
I would say they are two. It's that's three to two, so we don't have a majority, so that's a it's not a super majority, so it would be a no. So it stops right there. So do I hear a motion?
Okay, all we need to do is make a motion then.
Make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the variance for a ten-foot eleven-inch setback for the property at what's the address? Excuse me?
Nine oh two.
Nine oh two.
Nine oh two.
Pine Breeze Drive. Pine Breeze Drive.
What was the address? I'm sorry. Oh, nine oh two Pine Breeze Drive. In accordance with all the necessary.
Requirements.
Requirements of the variance.
I second the motion.
All right. Motion all right with you, Mary Kay?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's take a vote on it. All those for the motion? All those against the motion? So the. Okay, so it's four to one for the motion. The motion passes.
No.
No, it's not. That's right, it's not passed. Four to one against, but your set your motion included the current ten-foot setbacks. That's why I asked.
He he asked the motion was to approve the the variance. The motion was denied. One for the variance, four against the variance.
Okay. So. All right, so, Mr. Conlin, your your variance was denied. And your next step, if you want to challenge it, was to take it to court, and Becky can guide you in that and the appropriate steps on that. And we thank you. And we thank you and thank you for coming.
We can discuss this later, but you will get written notification of the board's decision. Thank you.
Okay, so the vote was one for and four against. Request is therefore denied. The next agenda item is approval of minutes. Minutes for the regular meeting held Tuesday, October 26, 2021. Are there any corrections to the minutes of the October 26 meeting? If there are no corrections, is there a motion for approval and a second?
Motion to approve the amendments for Tuesday, October 26 minutes?
All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. Staff, council, or liaison, anyone have any item?
No, sir.
Take a motion to adjourn?
Motion, mo, motion to adjourn?
Second the motion?
All those in approval, say aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned.